Tony, we are live streaming on YouTube.
Okay, thank you Kelly. So good afternoon, everyone. This is a public hearing for D3 LLC. That's what the project is known for. And today is May 18th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. So good afternoon. This is again, this is a public hearing of the Suffolk County Industrial Development Agency. Today is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. My name is Anthony Catapano and I am the hearing officer. Also assisting is Kelly Murphy, the Deputy Executive Director. This is a public hearing for a project known as D3 LLC. A legal ad of the public hearing notice was published in Newsday on May 8th, 2021. As required by law, a copy of the notice of the public hearing was sent to the affected taxing jurisdictions, which are Suffolk County, the Town of Huntington, and the Half-Hollow Hills School District by certified mail. A copy of the notice was also emailed to all IDA board members, emailed to all members of the Suffolk County Legislature, and is posted on our agency's website. A copy of the company's application and proposed IDA assistance was also posted to the agency's website at SuffolkIDA.org under the Research and Resources menu option, and then tab over to the Public Notices tab. This hearing is being held live through the agency's YouTube channel and can be viewed through the agency's website at SuffolkIDA.org under the Watch Meetings menu option, and you will be linked to the agency's YouTube channel to view the public hearing. This hearing is being recorded and can also be viewed afterwards on the Suffolk County IDA's YouTube channel. For this public hearing, the minutes of these proceedings is being transcribed by Donna Ritzman, who is present at this hearing and is a stenographer from Veritex Legal Solutions, which is a court reporting firm. Again, a copy of the public hearing notice, the company's IDA application, and the cost benefit analysis are posted on the Suffolk IDA's website at SuffolkIDA.org under the Research and Resources menu option, and then the Public Notices tab. The public hearing notice included information on how to participate in this hearing, and it's also on the agency's website. Interested members of the public are invited to participate in the public hearing by, and then I'll just bring it up on the screen here. Can that be seen?
Yes, we can see them.
All right, so this is information on how to participate. There's three ways. The first way is to register as a participant in order to make a brief statement by visiting the Suffolk IDA website at SuffolkIDA.org. At the top of the homepage, look for the Public Hearings menu tab, and a pop-up window will appear to register. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the public hearing. And the Zoom webinar ID is 874-5696-2121. But you still need to register because you need an additional information in order to join into this Zoom public hearing. And then the second way to participate is to view the hearing through the agency's website at SuffolkIDA.org. Look for the Watch Meetings menu option, and you'll be linked to the agency's YouTube channel to view the public hearing. And the third way is to either submit written comments by mail to our mailing address or preferably through our email, through email on our email account at info@sufficida.org. So that's info@sufficida.org. Please send any written comments to the agency for receipt by tomorrow, May 19th, 2021 by 3:00 PM, and we will include it into this public hearing record. And the Suffolk County IDA Board of Directors provided initial approval for the project on April 22nd, 2021. This public hearing is part of the approval process. Comments from this hearing will be provided to the Suffolk County IDA Board of Directors, which will consider a final approval tentatively scheduled for this Thursday, May 20th, 2021 at 12:30 PM. And that IDA board meeting will also be held live and recorded and can be viewed following the link on the agency's website to its YouTube channel. So the first thing we did here was describe the public hearing process and how to participate. Now, the second thing we will do will provide an overview of the D3 LLC application and the proposed IDA assistance. And then the third item is we will open it up to the public if there are public comments. So I'll just scroll down here and you'll see this is the public hearing notice that was published in Newsday on May 8th and sent to the affected taxing jurisdictions. It describes the company, the project, those three locations that this project involves, and then it spells out how to participate or to provide comments in regard to this, for this public hearing. And so now here's the, an overview of their, of their, the company application, the D3 LLC application. So they're headquartered at 20 Melville Park Road in Melville. They are a division of a French-based company. And so the operations in Suffolk County involves five buildings, and it's their North and South America's division. So it covers North and South America, and it's right here in Melville. So the project involves three of their buildings. These, the five buildings that they occupy and operate out of, they lease, and so the project involves three of these locations. 70 Maxus Road, Melville, 75 Marcus Drive, Melville, 20 Melville Park Road, Melville. And so the project description is to renew three leases, expand and renovate and equip the three locations. They have, it shows the app, the 70 Maxus Road is about 55,376 square feet where they design, manufacture, warehouse, and distribute for the travel retail and Sephora Coles business unit. So the company, I should back up, the company is a manufacturer of retail displays, including in-store furniture, cabinets, shelving, and digital displays for the travel retail industry, which could, were also airport stores, Nordstrom's, Kohl's, Sephora, and many luxury retailers. So just getting back to the property, to the project description, the second building is 75 Marcus Drive, Melville, and it's 49,000 square feet approximately. And it, it's, what they use it for is to manufacture, warehouse, and distribute for department stores and the Macy's business unit that they have. And then the 20 Melville Park Road facility that they operate out of is 68,000 square feet, and it's their headquarters with administrative offices, design, and manufacturing for their Sephora business unit. So overall, the project is about $3 million, and you could see renovations of about 775,000 and some manufacturing equipment that they're going to purchase as well as non-manufacturing equipment. And also the ground lease costs are about $1.6 million. So you could see currently they have 191 jobs in Suffolk County at these five locations with an annual payroll of $13.2 million, and the average salary equates to about $69,000 per employee average salary. So that, as a result of the renewal of the leases and the expansion of the, they're actually going to expand the 70 Maxus Road. They're going to take on another almost 19,000 square feet to support their Sephora Coles line. And so that's going, overall, these three locations, or overall, for the five locations, it would result in an additional 65 jobs to be created. So at the end of two years, they'll have 256 jobs with a payroll of around $17 million annually. And again, the average salary is about $69,000. So you can see here the history of the board actions. So on April 22nd, 2021, the IDA, the ID Board of Directors provided an initial approval through an inducible resolution for the $3 million project. And then today is May 18th, 2021, and we're holding the public hearing. So now we'll go into the estimate of the assistance or the benefits. So it's broken down by each building, each of the three buildings. So this is the first building, Maxus, 70 Maxus Road in Melville. So the, it's just, all three buildings, it's 10-year property tax abatement. It starts at 50% abatement and declines 5% a year. So by the same token, that ends up being a 27.5% savings to the company, but they're still paying about 72.5% of the tax bill. So overall, the the IDA is providing sales tax benefits for the three properties and also property tax abatements. So in total, the sales tax totals for the three locations, about $44,458 of sales tax exemption for the renovations and the purchase of equipment, and also for the property tax abatements for the three buildings. It totals about $935,553 to the three, the three locations. So overall, for the totals, the savings is estimated to be, there's no mortgage recording tax because they're leasing the facility, so they're not, they don't own, they don't own these facilities. So it's just that the IDA is contemplating providing sales tax exemption and property tax abatements for the, for the three buildings. So overall, as far as what, what they will save over the, over the life of the 10 years is about $980,000 or $98,000 per year over 10 years. By the same token, they'll be paying almost $2.5 million or $250,000 per year over the 10-year span. So that concludes the presentation. This is the other, the next building, 75 Marcus Drive, and it's broken down individually to, for that building. And then the next one is 20 Melville Park Road. And again, it's a property tax term is 10 years, and this is the schedule for that particular building. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly and ask her if anybody have any, anybody signed up to make any comments or if we receive any comments through our email account?
So we do not have any attendees wishing to make comment or speak, nor have we received any emails with any comments regarding the D3 LLC project.
Okay, all right, thanks Kelly. Okay, so with that, our customary practice is to keep the public hearing open for 30 minutes in order to give the public an opportunity to attend the hearing. And then also, again, I just wanted to point out that we will accept comments through next, through tomorrow, May 19th. That's Wednesday, May 19th, tomorrow by 3:00 PM. And the preferable way to send a comment in is through info@sufficida.org. You could also mail, mail the comments in or mailing addresses here, but the best way to do it at this point would be the info@sufficida.org. So we leave, it's about 4:13 PM. So we'll, again, we'll leave the hearing open for about 30 minutes. So at 4:30, we'll come back and, and see if we had any comments. If we had, prior to 4:30, if we have any comments, we'll come back and, and take those comments. But in the meantime, we'll, we'll, we'll hold, we'll hold this in recess for now, and we'll, we'll return it at like 4:30 to end it if there are no further, no, no comments. So thank you very much. So thank you very much. Tony? Tony, I have 4:30 at this point? Okay, so as Kelly noted, it's 4:30 now. And just ask Kelly again if there are any comments, anybody sign up through the email account or any, any comments at all anywhere?
No, there have been no comments submitted.
Okay, all right. In light of that, then we will end this public hearing since there are no comments from the public. Again, the, another way to submit comments is by next, is by tomorrow at 3:00 PM to our info@ida, idasufficida.org, info@sufficida.org email account, and then your comments will be included in this public hearing record. So I just want to thank everybody, Donna Ritzman and Kelly Murphy for helping out today. And this public hearing has ended, thank you.